Sarah's on there now, so certainly we should be.
We're good.
Should be good to go.
Okay. Hey, if we take a minute, Stan, you want to pray for us this morning? Okay, we're gonna start with the pledge, guys and gals.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve. We want to thank you for the opportunity to meet here together in public in a, in a land that's free and open. We want to thank you for the blessings that you've given us and the resources in Adams County and in Indiana. Help us to use those resources in the best way possible to serve you and to serve the residents of Adams County. And we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Stan. Hey, should have received the minutes from the May the thirteenth meeting.
I didn't make a couple of minor corrections on that, so those are corrected now.
And I.
Any questions?
I saw a correction, but Tony's made it, so I don't have any. I'm fine with them, Stan.
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes from May thirteenth.
I'll second.
Hey, which my main seconded, that passes.
Hey, I handed out to you prior to the meeting, the monthly weights and measures report submitted by Dan Hackman. If we'd like to enter those into the record. So moved.
Second.
Question carries, those minutes are entered into the record.
Okay, the utilities paid in Lao, the amount on that is thirty-eight thousand nine forty-seven thirty-five. I hand that out to you prior to the meeting, the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five amounts on there so that you can compare.
Obviously, nothing moves down, so the comparison pretty self-explanatory.
That's for me, Tony.
It might be for Eric.
No, I don't think. Tony, you thought that first net increase was due to some additional devices that were added?
Yeah, I believe I did.
Hey, any questions on the utilities paid in Lao? If not, need a motion?
First, get review with me. First net means what, Tony?
That is the public safety one that the sheriff's department and IT, it's like a.
Public safety internet access, right? It's like internet access, but just for the public safety folks.
Right, yep.
I, I move that we accept the utilities.
I'll second that.
Okay. Doug, Stan, thanks, guys. Motion passes.
Now, we have the weekly health insurance claims from Allied, and that is in the amount of forty thousand five fifty-six twenty-four. I verified the claimants, and let's see, medical was seventy-three twenty-nine eighty-eight, prescriptions thirty-three five fifty-nine twenty-six. There was an adjustment lowering that three hundred twenty-four dollars to make the total of forty-five five six two four.
What was the amount again, forty-five what?
Forty.
Zero. Forty zero.
Five five six two four.
Five five six.
Forty thousand five hundred fifty-six twenty-four.
Stan, you have a.
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll second Allied.
Motion passes. Stand, Doug, thanks.
Okay, and finally, we have the payroll claims, and the payroll claims are in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Three ninety-four, one forty-six, thirty-five.
We, we received us time cards for review.
I think the time cards was last week.
Yeah, oh, that's right, that's right. Time card was last year.
I move we accept payroll in the amount of three ninety-four, one forty-six, thirty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, that is all that I have, just don't forget this when I go up. Okay, um, just to take care of this wall, Tony's pointing at it, um, we have a, a refund to a taxpayer, a reduction to a taxpayer's tax obligation for a piece of property that was on an assessment that should have been removed when a split took place. Uh, this is, request is coming from the auditor, and the refund is three hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And the auditor, the treasurer, the assessor all sign off on it, and the commissioners sign off on it. I don't think we've taken official action on those before. I think you just need signatures. It's just a correction on the assessment.
So, Steve, are you asking for a motion to accept?
I, I, if we don't need it, we don't need it.
Yeah, we don't, I don't like the.
So.
I just wanted you guys to know what you're signing.
Okay. Send that down for signature.
And I'll pick all that stuff up in a little bit, Doug.
Okay.
And that was all that I had.
Okay. Just snuck in.
Just one page.
I think so, just one signature on that.
Yeah, one signature, that's all I signed anyway.
What's that guardrail?
Yeah.
Well, you got a, you got a, you got a son in high school now, right?
Yeah, well, officially. Yeah, I just walked away from eighth grade graduation, so that's where I was at until about nine fifty-five, so.
Does that make you feel old?
Oh, yeah, since that's my youngest, definitely.
Yeah, wait your kids into thirties.
Beyond that.
Absolutely. Well, a couple items for you. Uh, first one is that NDOT Adams County, uh, the Countywide Bridge Inspection. Steve, you had mentioned that you've gotten an email from NDOT. That was technically our agreement. Unfortunately, there was an error, that's why when you saw the Allen County on there, that was a typo they issued. So they have corrected that and now issued that agreement. I've got a copy of that NDOT, uh, LPA or Adams County contract. It's a reimbursement agreement for the Countywide Bridge Inspection for twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine. Uh, the total agreed reimbursement of federal funds back to Adams County will total up to three hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred six dollars and forty-two cents, which is eighty percent of the agreement that we have with U S I for that same term. So I'm recommending and requesting approval for Steve to execute that DocuSign agreement.
And we've got enough money in Kew Bridge to pay the initial.
Yep, so that will start, that won't actually start spending money until twenty-six, so I'll end up putting that into the twenty-six budget proposal.
Okay. So we just need a, if you guys are in agreement, need a motion to authorize signature on that document.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
And the last item I have, which is too much for this week, is, uh, there was a crash, um, a hit and run crash on one of the guardrails on triple zero, just south of three hundred south. That's the picture that you see there is of the guardrail, and you can actually see the tire tracks and the roadway as well. That happened, I believe it was, uh, late April, first week of May, we came across that. I've got a proposal from C-Tech Corporation, they're a guardrail company here in Indiana. Their quote to repair that is seven thousand seventy-five dollars. But for that, since I need, for the, for the purchasing orders, I checked with Tony, it's something I just need to bring with you. It is one quote, we've had the history of working with C-Tech before as a county, I have not personally, but, um, this is one that was interested, unfortunately, because it's a small area, it's a high mobilization de-mob cost, uh, with twenty-five hundred dollars for mobilization. It's unfortunate, it's hit and run, I don't have evidence of who struck that. Um, and, um, I'm not sure if it's going to be worth our time to try to chase that down, but it's a, it's an unfair burden for the taxpayers to, to pay for that. It looks, there's nothing really in the area that would justify it other than distracted driver, lost control, and overcorrected and side-swiped that guardrail there.
Is that, is that. Is that guardrail located south of three hundred south or north of three hundred?
It's over a small structure. There's a small structure in that area between some houses that they, that that struck.
Uh, was that, is that something that the sheriff's department investigates to, in case they can find the person that hit that?
They struck the guardrail, and then when they overcorrected, they took the mailbox out and the residence to the other side from, in talking to Brad, what, uh, understand, does someone heard a noise while they're mowing about a quarter mile away? And, uh, and didn't really think too much of it. Um, they said they know what type of vehicle it was. When we went out and, uh, investigated it, we found a, a lamp from a Honda. It was Mark Honda on the, on the molding and the plastic, but that's all the other evidence we have.
Yeah, surprised it could drive away. I mean, it hit something, to bend that thing, takes a pretty good hit.
Yeah, you can see the voids where they pushed the post out of place, so the posts are likely bent, but certainly the, uh, W thread beam is, is, the W beam there is, is all bent, so that all needs to be replaced. Um, it's been about a month, unfortunately, it takes a little bit of time to get this. I requested the quote before I come to you, I wasn't sure where it would be, but it was over five thousand, so I needed to bring that to you.
But looking at it from, from the good standpoint, that potentially kept that driver from going down into the ditch or, or preventing a rollover and.
Guardrail did its job.
So the guardrail did exactly what it was.
Did its job. I mean, if, if they hadn't struck the guardrail, who's to say they didn't roll the vehicle over? Uh, the guardrail pushed that quarter, that rear panel, it looks like they hit the rear end of the vehicle and kept it square to the road, so they were able to drive away. Unfortunately, we still have the burden of, of the repair, so.
Can we use that piece of guardrail on some of our curbed roads?
Uh, if only.
Recycle the guardrail.
Recycle.
Save it just in case.
I might, I might see about taking that, put it on the scrap pile and it goes back.
Put it on Winchester Road, there's plenty of.
I don't, I don't imagine we'll get seven thousand dollars in scrap price on that.
Nate, you might want to cover, uh, you got a response from Red Gold on that facility, on that bridge, we looked at it down, uh.
Yeah, we, we, we need to approve, I think they spent in seven thousand seventy-five dollars on that.
We approved the cost of seven thousand seventy-five dollars for guardrail replacement.
Yep, and Doug, to your, to your comment.
You want to second that, Stan?
Yes.
Okay, we're good, moving on.
Moving on, all right. Yes, so, um, not on my notes, but, uh, what we've, uh, we have reached out to Red Gold regarding part of County Road, uh, eleven south, and, uh, there's a part of the Geneva Road that sits there, um, between parts of the Red Gold facility. Um, we've reached out to Red Gold because there are, one, there's two roadway parcels that are inside their campus that are owned by the county still, and the roadway and bridge to the east of their property essentially splits their campus off. And there really isn't a significant need for that roadway and the bridge that goes over the Loblawi. Um, in review of the bridge asset management plan, that bridge is going to show up for replacement likely in the next ten-year period, and it is significantly undersized for the watershed that it carries. Um, to try to find some ways to cut costs and make sure that we're spending money where it needs to be spent, we've met with Red Gold about options to, uh, abandon that roadway and close that roadway and that bridge in the future. Um, but they have not, at this point, said that they were in favor of it. They're working on some major renovation construction projects currently during the growing season, so this is when they're retooling certain plants. So the engineering department and ownership are busy with those, so they wanted us to delay that at this point. But during initial meetings, they seemed interested in it because this allows them some site access control that currently they're not able to do. So I think it's beneficial for both for the county and for Red Gold to pursue that, both for their site security and so that we're able to cut some expenses. It's a liability. I really don't want to spend, let's say, on the high end, maybe it's two million dollars to replace that bridge, and it really isn't a necessary piece of infrastructure. There hasn't been development there, and with the floodplain, there really isn't the opportunity to make use of that. So, um, overall, Doug, I hopefully that answered kind of the question where we're at at this point with it. Um, where we've had meetings with the attorneys to make sure that they had the identification of all the other effective property owners. Uh, just for general purposes and for the media, there's no sites that would be left without access. Everybody in the plan that we currently have would retain access to their properties from existing roadways, so.
So is that an abandonment of that road then ultimately is what we're looking at, Mark, do you think? And do we need a public hearing on that before we would do that?
Um, maybe. Uh, we sent a, did they respond? Cause I sent them a letter.
I haven't seen anything, but that was just early last week, so, and that was to a state, so there's a, there's a trust uh, that's involved in one of the properties that's owning, they're essentially owning some nature preserve land. Um, that's part of the, uh, not a revocable trust at this point, cause they.
Land trust, is it a land trust?
Yeah.
I think it's a land trust, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we're not just abandoning the bridge, we're abandoning the whole road?
There's a whole section of the roadway that we, and as part of that.
How far east would?
Believe, uh, around fifty east.
Is that twenty-five?
Or twenty-five east?
West.
West.
No, it's west, twenty-five west, not quite to twenty-five west.
Where, where the road makes the dog leg now?
Yes, the dog leg. There's a couple sections, there's like chunks of unimproved roadway as well there, and but that gravel road has been, has been a nuisance for the county. It's been a sight, well, one for flooding, so we ended up having to do quite a bit of work to maintain that after floods, sparse cleanup, and because it's an isolated area next to residential, it's, um, it's a nuisance for security and safety, and we have dumping in the nature preserve there as well because it's easy access.
Yeah, there's good news to this story, it's the fact that we're not having to make a decision on that bridge today.
No, there's no, there's no quick decisions on it. Um, we, it's been something that's been on my radar for a little while. Once I kind of identified that as, as being kind of an isolated area, and once we started looking at the location, it's a significant expense that I don't know that the county is, it's in our best interest.
My, my suggestion at this point in time, Nate, would be just to keep, keep it on, on Red Gold's radar. Just remind them of, of that, with their operation and the size of their operation, this isn't something that they're thinking about every day.
No, I, I, I don't imagine that it's, uh, it's a super high priority. They've probably got a multimillion dollar renovation project based on what he, what Alex told me, um, but this is certainly important to us before we start committing actual tax dollars. I don't want them.
Well, I'd say give it a, give it a couple months and then email Alex back and see where they are with it.
So, so by us abandoning that road and that bridge, would, that would not necessarily mean that it closes.
Correct. This would end up just turning over to the property owner. Part of what we'll have to work with, with the attorney in office, Mark, is to lay out the, the terms of that closure, making sure everybody knows what their rights are. Most likely, they would, uh.
Yeah, do you, you mean closure or abandon?
Uh, abandon that.
Well, we've abandoned it, most likely. Yeah. Um, but I've sent a letter out to the trustee of the, of the trust that owns the land, and so I need to speak with them. I think the most logical thing would be to, um, pick a, pick a point to the east where you go back and you put in maybe a turnaround, you know, a stone turnaround cul-de-sac, and then the private, property owners could put in their own gate, and so that their access from that point forward is going to be private, and then they maintain it up to that point. That's county, stops right there, and then the bridge would be turned over to Red Gold, and what they have is theirs. But you, you can't cut off somebody's access.
Yeah.
So we would maintain their access, they could even have some sort of reciprocal easement access agreement between the two of them, if that's what they desired. Um, but, you know, we, we just have to start a conversation with the, with the other property owner. We're already talking to Red Gold, we know what their interest is. We got to talk to the other, to the other owner, because they've got some significant holdings on either side of that road going, going back their ways.
So when I use the term blow here, I'm, I'm, I'm meaning that in a general term for the rest of the public, so as far as public access and kind of flows, but that, and access whatever's there would remain for those, for the benefit of the, the owners that are there. And closing the bridge essentially would be, we'd be taking out the oriental ring for the future. It would be assumed by the landlords that are there, which would be Red Gold.
But let me ask you this, as we consider abandonment, and maybe there's no advantage whatsoever, but there are several other dead-end roads that the county maintains that are basically people's driveways. Is there any advantage to consider multiple situations at one time, or does that make it worse?
I think every situation's a little bit unique.
Okay.
Becky has been looking into that, doing like an inventory, getting all those roads.
Okay.
On a, some list, and then someday we can discuss that, cause like you're saying, it's going to be different for different properties.
Sure.
Yeah, yes, we have been talking about that.
Thank you.
And, and that becomes complex because of how road funding is allocated to counties, often it is allocated based on your lane miles. So if that, it, it may be a situation where, yes, that's kind of an odd or a nuisance road because it's a private drive, but if you're spending less in its maintenance because of the limited use versus what you're receiving in, in the H funds through the state as far as your allocation, it might actually oddly enough be a net gain to the county versus the nuisance of the ditch.
With the current.
A calculation you need to, like, like, Mark said, it's on a case-by-case basis, and it's certainly something that you're going to want to work through with that.
With the current budget that was just passed, does it put more emphasis on lane miles?
Uh, it's been a fairly consistent metric. The state has been discussing going through some vehicle miles traveled, which assumes black box monitoring of your drivers, essentially the miles that are being traveled inside your county. And I think the county is, or the state has turned away from trying to do that sort of monitoring of the driving public. And for us, that would probably be a negative because your, the vehicle miles traveled, it would ignore entirely the Amish population and how they're traveling and their use. So right now, I, I would certainly push to maintain the, the miles, lane miles, and the county is our, our metric. So, but that's a whole other discussion. So, any else for Nate?
Good.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks, Dave.
This thing to settle, where Red Gold owned part of the road and also the bridge.
Uh, in all, in all likelihood, but that's when it's settled, we'll, we'll talk about.
Oh, yeah, that's why the other. That's why I'm trying to.
Morning, Brad.
Morning, guys.
Good, Brad.
Big money, huh? It's that time of the month.
Okay, well, there you are. That's a fun.
Yeah. All right. Received our monthly draw of month of May. So for the month of May, the M B H, we drew three hundred and twenty-three thousand sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Three hundred and twenty-three thousand sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. And if we go to the backside for the local road, it's free. For the month of May, we drew forty-nine thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Forty-nine thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-one cents.
I don't have any questions about either fund, so I move that we accept the report as submitted.
Doug.
Okay. Motion passes, thanks. Okay, I have one permit today, and that is for J and L Contracting Communications. And they are a subcontractor for Meeting Comp. On County Road three hundred north between sixty-sixth east and twenty-seven. They are going to, so, three hundred north there on the east side twenty-seven, now that kind of narrows down there. So since we're paving three hundred north going west, we are going to have Brooks pave that and actually widen that, get it out to where it should be, at least that short stretch in there that's narrow. So this is part of that. They, they need to move their cables back. They're close to the road right now, and widening it would be, so it's part of that. And they are going to board along the south side of the road, under the road to the north side, in the right-of-way, place cables underground and get rid of their poles, or get it off the poles.
And that's.
You don't see any problem with any of that?
No, we, we, we really, we need to move them so we can widen the road.
Yeah, yeah, it's our, our request, huh?
Yeah, yes.
I move that we accept the request for the permit.
Second. You say J and L Contracting?
Yes, J L Contracting.
J L.
Yeah, it says J L, I threw it in, sorry.
Where's it from, Rob, right?
It doesn't say on there. So, uh, you guys are signing that one thing, so with our seven hundred south project there, between twenty-seven and one fifty, we met, Nate and I met with Flemings and some of the people from the school corporation last week. They are projected, their start date is June second, Flemings' projected start date is June second. You know, of course, there we go again, weather dependent and all that, but they actually, I felt they were very, they worked with the school well because the school's like, we got graduation, we got a softball tournament, June second, it's all done. So they are starting June second, and they're, I shouldn't even probably say it, but they, they would like to be done before the start of school the next season. But to go along with that, NIPSCO has to do some relocation work there at twenty-seven and, um, seven hundred south, and this is more for the media. So on Thursday, Flemings have portable stoplights. They are going to be setting up portable stoplights on twenty-seven and seven hundred south because there are going to be lane restrictions. So it's just going to be, they're really hoping it's a one-day project and they're out of there, but this is more just for the media and the public. There are going to be lane restrictions there for a day, maybe two if they don't get done.
I assume the state has to be notified of that and approve that kind of closure on their highway?
Yep. So the only other thing I have, this was, uh, this was brought to my attention, um, and I reached out, got some, I talked to Mark a little bit. On Winchester Road, if you gentlemen remember, it was on three, four, twenty-five, Zayo Communications, um, applied for permits, and they are going to run their fiber optic all the way from the county line down Winchester Road, and then there was a few other spots. Well, I have a gentleman that lives up there call me and just had questions in general, you know, basically about, uh, the legality of it, of them doing that. So I explained to him kind of our process, you know, has always been, the company's come in to apply for permit, we go out and look at it, and if we don't see a problem with it, we present it to the commissioners. Then once you gentlemen okay it, we give them the okay to start. And so now we have at least one landowner that's questioning the legality of them being able to use the right. And so I reached out to Mark Clayton, you know, just, I don't understand the legalities of it either. I just know there is a road right-of-way there that we are allowed to use for any repairs and that we need to do, so. Uh, Mark, you want to kind of?
Yeah, I'm researching it here. Well, what I need is, I'll need contact information from that, um.
The gentleman that called me?
Yep, and I got that.
Yep. But basically, the bottom line is, we have, we have a utility right-of-way that the landowners have granted us over time, whether it was this particular landowner or not, but that easement or that right-of-way is within their, I assume within their deed, that we have a utility easement, and that we have a right to use that utility easement at our, at our discretion, was always my, my understanding of the way.
my understanding of the way that worked.
It's generally forty, forty feet, twenty feet from the center line. That's what the statute says, so.
On all county roads.
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, what's usually the, uh, distance on it, on like state route one sixteen, two eighteen, twenty-seven, et cetera?
It varies, but one sixteen was eighty feet, but you know, when they abandoned it, they, it ended up going back to forty.
It was never recorded twenty from each side. Where we get in trouble on this stuff oftentimes is, we may, you know, Brad does his own work, we sign the permit for him to do their work. And sometimes I N M or fiber optic or whomever it is, they subcontract to work out. These people come in from who knows where, and they just, they just, they, they don't, they just trench, period. Lay it in and take off. Meanwhile. A lot of farmers like myself, matter of fact, went through a county located tile right next, right on my, that my property drains on. They went right through the tile. They trashed right through the tile. And they're no, they're no longer around to be found.
I know. I hear you.
But.
And we have had that happen also with, with us. You know, somebody calls in about suckle and right of way and we go out there and there's a cable through it. And a few years ago, one of them I, I really pushed with the phone company, it was put in at ninety-two. The problem didn't show up for that long.
Yeah. Eventually broke down.
It eventually broke down. And we've got a couple others out there right now that are the same way, trying, not trying to be negative with them, but trying to get them to come out. You know, or something that was done that many years ago is.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I think that's, you know, I, I, but unfortunately, unfortunately, we all like our utilities, so, and they've gotta run somewhere.
Yeah.
And it's fortunate that we have that utility right of way that runs along our county road infrastructure. To allow those utilities to use. And I think it's important that, that, that be, that, that be maintained and, and, and from a legal perspective, I think we have every right to do that. And we're gonna continue to do that.
And so anyhow, that's when I reached out to Mark, you know, and I've got the gentleman's contact information. I'll give him the mark then.
Sure.
You know, if he'd be willing to reach out to him.
Sure, just explain what the.
Like you said, I don't know.
Rules of the road, huh?
Yeah.
Well, and I think probably where it becomes more of a concern is if that utility easement starts getting more and more full.
Sure.
I, I mean, if you have phone lines, fiber optic lines from two different companies, sewer lines running through there, gas running through there. You know, you can fill up a utility easement and, and then as far as, electrical easements, you know, when they require a minimum separation, same with gas, they require a minimum separation. You know, then I can see starting, and, and, but even there again, I think it's more our issue. Rather than the landowners.
Yeah, I don't, certainly isn't.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's another reason where when we're converting these new roads, we ask for that additional ten feet.
Sure, yeah.
You know, it gives them room for the tillings.
Yeah.
And when new ones come in, they're.
The legality part, Mark, as far as legality is concerned, as long as it's in the county's right of way. That the property owner happens to live along that has no liability to it. But of course, the complaint you get is, well, I'm, you know, at the same time, they may not have liability. But they're also paying property tax from the middle of the road.
And the gentleman, and he discussed that a little bit too, that.
Yeah, the, the road right of way is assessed at one dollar.
Uh, yep. So now I'm working with Mark on that.
Okay.
Good. So we get an answer back to that?
Jimmy, you know, as a one-on-one for people in the county, we appreciate to, you know, quoting a little bit what Mark, Mark and Brad's talking about here.
Good. What else we got for us, Brad? That's it? Anything else for Brad?
I don't.
Okay.
Rick, come on now.
Hey Steve.
Yes.
Did we approve claims or do we approve claims today?
We didn't, we didn't have claims presented to us, so maybe they're.
Alright. I must've pulled one from last week then or whatever. Okay.
Hopefully we didn't miss that. Otherwise we can't pay bills.
Yeah.
Rick, what have you got for us?
I told him I could ask and see what you guys want to do, so. Last week, we had a couple days with high humidity, had a little warm. You know, if it would just stay that way and be that way, but here we are in the fifties now.
Yeah.
In the assessor's office, and I think maybe even the auditor's office might add a little issue, but. The humidity was kinda high and they were having problems with, uh, I believe there's a machine or something sticking. What I found when I could get some attention on it was, as far as being warm, at least I think it was, during the winter, they were kinda hot, so I shut the vents down in there. And then I went in the next morning and opened them up. It seemed to be a lot cooler in there.
Sure.
We had like two days of that. But they had asked me about, you know, possibly a dehumidifier. If they could get one, have one, or basically, I guess maybe if I could purchase it.
Do we have any anywhere else that we've purchased?
There is some, a few, but to be honest with you, not that I think that I've really purchased. As you well know, one gets one, they're, we all want one.
Our office bought our own.
Yeah, some of them bought their own. Um, and Ed may have money to do that, but I, I just told him I would ask him to present this to you, so. I'm more willing to do that.
Sounds to me like you, you've solved most of the problem by opening their vents back up.
Well, no.
That would be my inclination is let's not do anything for a while.
I just said, bring it up. I agree.
It's not a perfect world.
Yeah.
Too hot, too cold, too uncomfortable, whatever. Have the same problems.
Big building, big building.
Same problems at home.
North, uh, north of the building here, door two and door three. I've had this scheduled, it was maybe gonna get done this week, but with the weather, I doubt it now. The, the concrete, the concrete. Pillars, so to speak, the concrete slabs, the, the face of them are really peeling really bad. I'm gonna have those resurfaced and sealed. They were gonna do it this week. May not happen, but if not, weather gets breaks, we're gonna have this. So what that may entail is, is, we won't do both of at the same time, but we'll probably close one on caution tape or something, so. You may not be able to go out or come in door three until we get it, or, or they may be able to work around it, so. Just putting that out there.
Good.
The signs I spoke about last week, but in the building, I have them in hand, weather permitting, I'll get them up.
Good.
When they do that concrete refacing, that's not gonna close those steps off, though, is it?
Like I said, it, it may for just a little bit. It's not gonna be like two or three days.
And you're not gonna do both up at the same time?
No, absolutely not. And I wanted to wait until after tax time.
Yeah. Appreciate the visitor parking.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's.
I hope so, that's. From the visitor perspective, that's appreciated. Hopefully the employees are adjusting.
Uh, we had an issue with the third floor bathroom. Just had some blockage, got it unplugged, it should be functioning okay now. Last week also, there was a couple of warm, muggy days. The, the courtroom, I guess, the superior court, or I'm sorry, circuit court was a little warm. Just to see what was going on with it. I've got Myers, they'll, they'll, they'll be over there today. They stopped by yesterday. When I put that, uh, we put the new compressor in on one of the heat pumps. Noticed like one of the, like a block heater was out of it, so they had to order it, so they're gonna come put that in. I wanted to get it done. We don't need it now, November will be here before we know it. Maybe I lost some shelf and I wanna get it installed. Stan and Dan Shingle, I don't believe he's done with that report, but you said he would send it to you. So I don't know if you've seen it yet, I.
He did send it to me and I passed it along to Steve and Doug.
Okay.
And Mark and Clayton, and so we're all gonna hopefully have a chance soon to sit down and talk about it.
Okay. I, I hadn't seen it, that's just what he told me, so I knew he was going to do this.
I appreciate that. And, and when I passed it along, I didn't think to pass it along to you, but you'd, you'd be welcome to, to see the report since you were there.
Think that's about it. If, if I can, I'm just letting you know, I'm, I'm. Not gonna be here on Friday. I'll get back to you, so just call. Good for you. Good deal.
I, I have a, I have a question. I know we've talked about this previously, but, at a meeting this morning in this room that started at eight o'clock with visitors from outside the building. Obviously those doors don't automatically unlock until eight o'clock. And we've talked about the, the challenge with unlocking those doors earlier, at least the concern. Maybe from a safety or visitors in the building type concern. I guess I'm, I, I'm, I'm not yet convinced that we shouldn't at least consider opening, if no other door than just this door at seven forty-five. What do you guys think of that? I know we've talked about it, what's?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I thought about the solid waste this morning, eight o'clock, and I, I get here a little bit early and then somebody's pecking on the window to let them in. I did put a rock in the door.
Yeah.
Which isn't the best way to do things. So I, I, I definitely go along with that, Steve. At least this door. If we're gonna have a meet, well, I don't know, what'd be wrong with just unlocking the whole building at seven forty-five?
I, I, I think we've heard in, in Shannon, maybe you, I know the safe, we've talked about that with the safety committee, I think, and, there's some concern, I think, that visitors enter the building and maybe are kind of waiting outside of offices for them to open and whatnot, but, I guess I'm not sure that that's a, that, that, that's a, it's a big enough concern to me to keep the bill, keep, the doors locked until eight o'clock.
It'd just be a, well, if you change the seven forty-five, it wouldn't be a complicated thing, would it? Just change it on the clock or what?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, are you talking about all of them?
Well, what?
I guess when you, when you have those meetings, obviously I'm gonna, and you may already know when they are all the time. I'm gonna have to know when they are.
Well, that's the problem.
Well, what I, what.
Let you know.
What, what I would say is just every morning at, at seven forty-five, that door opens up. Shannon, thoughts?
Just something to kinda keep in mind is that if you, if we let individuals who are not employees in prior to, there might be a perception issue if, if they walk into an office and the employees aren't ready to start their work for the day, or, they're not ready to be served for the day, or you don't even, or the employees just aren't there yet. It might be something, well.
But every office door has their, their own door. They could keep that door closed to the public until eight A M.
They do, yeah.
So I think that, that's controllable at the, at the individual office level. I guess I kinda consider this to be more of a public building. And, and access to a public building, I think should be more the, to the convenience of the, of the public versus the convenience of the occupant. They've got control of their own offices and can open those doors when they're ready to serve the public.
Yeah, when you, uh, when you, when the doors on the outside entrances unlock. It doesn't unlock any interior doors, does it?
No.
But all the interiors are keys, is that correct?
Uh, there is. They're keyed or.
Fobbed.
I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with any of those and whatever you want to do. We know the buildings are eight to four, eight A M to four. I'm just asking, why is the meeting at eight fifteen?
Well.
Cause the world wakes up at eight o'clock.
Yeah. And I, just like this morning, we had a, we had an eight o'clock and nine o'clock, ten o'clock. And usually, you, you need to leave, allow at least an hour for all of our meetings. Sometimes they're thirty minutes, sometimes they're fifty-five, but I, I, I wouldn't have any problem unlocking a seven forty-five stand. I don't know what you think.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
The whole building or it's just the one door?
I'm fine with just this door. But, but you know, when you think about it, if I've got an eight o'clock meeting with the auditor, eight o'clock meeting with the assessor. And I can't get in the door until eight o'clock, I'm late to my meeting.
So what do you wanna do, Steve? Just one or all of them?
I'm easy.
I think if we did just the one, I mean, that, if, when we have meetings, that's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
But let's, let's, let's start with this one then. And, and if we wanna change it, we always can.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Shannon, would you communicate that, or one of you two communicate that then to the staff, that that's, that that door will be, begin to be unlocked to the public at seven forty-five?
Right, and still get into their own offices.
Absolutely.
Appropriately.
Yep.
Expectation is not that they start working prior to eight.
Absolutely not.
Exactly.
Yep.
Good point.
So door four, seven.
Thanks, Rick. Hey, Mark.
I think Brad, this is yours.
Yeah.
Thank you. One subdivision, uh, really simple, and it's taking a single lot, turning into three. One twenty-four and one oh one, it's the corner. And this lot, this corner house right here is already owned by somebody else, Brandon Rowe. And it's now going to be thirty-eight acres, lot one, thirty acres, lot two, eighty acres, lot three. One twenty-four is access, and they've got both one oh one.
Does this have a residence on it right now?
It does not. It's just some woods.
Gotcha.
Everybody's got questions?
Everybody's got access.
Okay.
Motion goes through.
Second.
Passes things. Sign in, please.
Just for FYI, the, uh, five year rotation on my vehicle.
Uh-huh.
This year.
Okay.
I talked about that once.
Good.
Trying to get to a hundred and thirty before I trade it in, which is in about a month.
Remind me, you drive a truck, is that right?
Super.
Super open, okay. Is that best suited for you or do you need to change?
Actually picked it.
Okay.
Eleven years ago.
Good deal.
I need, I need all wheel drive. Yeah, I had a truck. Because what I did was their all wheel drive is really good.
Yeah.
So getting me in and out of sites.
So you got the, you got that in your budget?
Yep.
And just go ahead and.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, we, you know, last time the, we went till died at a hundred and seventy miles and then the transmission offed it up and, and then the commissioner at that time said, let's do it on a five year rotation, because the miles I put on.
Makes sense to me.
We're, 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 we'd be around a hundred and thirty, and we are, so.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Hey, moving on to county attorney. Only have one left, Mark.
What's that though?
I see Clayton, Clayton has, uh, has abandoned us. I said, we only have one left, so Mark, what have you got for us?
Uh, we just got some, right of way things that we're working on here, so.
Okay.
Eight hundred north and some easements.
Okay.
As far as.
Have those, uh, offer letters gone out? Is that where we're at on that eight hundred north project?
Yeah, we're just revising it, cause they needed updated.
Updated phrasals?
Okay.
Those appraisals in?
No, what we did is, we're just revising them based upon increase in value. I'm not gonna get a whole new appraisal for everybody.
So you don't have to use updating based on market value changes?
Changes, yep.
So who, who dictates or who tells us what the market value changes are?
I'll call the appraiser and see if he can update the one that we have instead of having to have six or eight of them.
Good.
I mean, that's a mud road.
Okay, that's a mud road, yeah.
Yeah.
So when do you, when do you think those appraisal, I guess depends on how quickly the appraiser gets back to you?
Yeah, I can get that here, hopefully in the next week or two.
Okay.
But as far as the letters go, those are ready.
Okay.
Now they've, we've got, um, I deal with Dave, Dave Bumgarner, he represents Moses, so that's really the one that is the critical one.
Okay. Well, we can be thankful Dave's involved in that.
That's necessary.
That's necessary.
Yep. Good deal. Nothing else for us?
Nope.
Okay. Attorney checked out the list. Shannon, what have you got for us this morning?
I don't have anything today, but thank you.
Okay. Anything from the public? Public? No, no public?
Not today.
Okay. Anything else from the commissioners?
I think I'm good.
A little too chilly outside.
Yeah.
We did have a, a meeting with the IT committee on Friday.
Sure.
Everyone on the committee was there. So number one, I appreciate that. We had excellent discussions on, on the IT budget and how to look at that, how to manage that. We can separate out with, uh, suggestions from Tony, we have the ability to separate out IT funding per department. And that includes the other entities that we're providing for and separate out reimbursements and expenses. So just a lot of progress on, on budget wise. Uh, we're, we're talking about a new system to invoice outside departments. So just, I, I thought it was very, very productive with Mark there. I mean, Mark's, the, the perspective he put on this whole thing just really laid out a, a system that's gonna make, make things more, more attributable where they belong. So, and, um, possibly using his office to invoice rather than Mike invoicing himself. So just, just a it was a two hour meeting, uh, well attended, good discussions, good input. So, um, I, I just really appreciate that. So hopefully we're going to come back with some good results on some of the questions you guys got. Yeah, and some of the questions Mike had too, I mean, so. Other than that, uh, I don't know whether, are you going to Mayor's and Commissioner's?
I'm not sure yet. It's a wall bash.
I, I was going to go, but my only thing is we've got EMA meeting. And I, I'm almost thinking I would like to go to that for the sake of the siren discussion.
Yeah.
And they determine, they keep saying they probably will.
Yeah, okay. But I, other than that, um, I don't think I've got anything else. Other than, uh, Rick talked about the report from the engineer.
Right.
Uh, I passed those emails along to you guys and I'm going to be working on scheduling that, uh, Brooks assistant, so.
The only thing I have, Steve, is if we go forward on our EMS contribution from the county to the hospital, you're probably going to have to study that a little bit, look into it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I know that's, um, obviously our whole, our relationship with the hospital is such a, such, such a collaborative relationship. I think we need to make sure that we're, we're, we're pulling our fair share of that.
Fair.
I know once the, uh, once those bonds are paid off, then I, I certainly think we want to look at, at, at our, our share of that EMS bill. I think we're probably exceeds what we're paying them now and, and we need to take a look at adjusting that. Obviously that's a question for council, but I agree with you. I think that's, I think we should need to resurface that.
I don't think I have, yeah, I don't think I have anything, um. First, you know, we, our health department, I don't know, maybe Eric's not even where Jimmy, I don't know. You know, we work, healthy department was contemplating a move out towards the hospital, but they're going to stay in-house. Both the health nurse and the, yeah.
I think that's probably, probably a funding thing coming out of the, those, uh, state funding thing. Um, and, and impact of state reduction in state funding.
Right.
Um, one of the things that, that I'll tell you guys, um, Nate, Brad and I made a trip up to meet with, uh, uh, the, the Indiana, the state highway department, uh, regional manager on, uh, yesterday, we made that trip. As part of kind of the whole county wide vision plan, part of that is, is assessing and understanding our transportation network. And so the primary reason for that meeting on my side was to understand if they had something, some kind of grand plan that would have changed anything relative to state highway. The current situation with state highways in the county. And the bottom line is that the individual that we met with, who was over the whole kind of northeast corner of Indiana, indicated that he is unaware of any changes that they've got in their, in, in their planning, even their long range planning that would change any of our state highways in the county. So that was really what I needed to hear. And then Nate and Brad had some, some things that they, that they talked with, uh, uh, with this individual relating to, but, uh, but that was the message I took away from that was no changes, no additional widening of twenty-seven, no changes anywhere really in their, even in their long range planning. So we need to plan that the state highways are going to stay the way they are as we do our, work on our plan. So.
Just Steve, I also, I want to throw in there, Doug brought up EMS.
Mm-hmm.
So forth. We're going to have to set a time to come down with you guys and go through your budget.
Commissioners budget.
I would, I would suggest probably some Tuesday after meeting when you guys are all free.
That'd be fine.
And we'll just go through that.
Yeah.
Like we do every year.
Right.
That'd be fine. Hey, anything else for the good of the cause? If not, we're bumping up against eleven o'clock. That'd be a good time to call, call for adjournment.
So move. Set on that safe.
Oh, she carries.
We're adjourned.